This is the record meeting of the Eastern City Commission. It is May sixteenth. I've asked Richard to lead the prayer and I'll do the pledge. Richard?
I wish gracious heaven, Father. We do thank you, Lord, for this day. And we thank you for all that you've given us in this community and in our nation. Lord, we just pray for everyone across our nation now, Lord, especially the times that we're having in the world today. We ask you to take care of some of this turmoil for us, Lord. Lord, then we ask you just to be with us tonight and you watch us in to make our decisions for the community, for the best for this community, Lord. We ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you haven't silenced your phones, I don't ask you to do that at this time. I don't have anything for public comments. Minister the oath of office to elected officials, and that is for Richard and I. We need to stand and...
Okay, y'all just say it, y'all follow along. I...
Larry Vernon.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of City Commissioner.
The duty of the Office of City Commissioner.
Of the city of Eastland.
Of the city of Eastland.
Texas. And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Approved minutes of the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. You've got a copy of those.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the meeting of April eighteenth.
Second.
And a motion from Richard and a second from Cecil. Approved the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, the Board of City Commission discussed and take action on the following agenda items. Number one, the election of city officers.
Financial report?
Huh?
Financial report?
Did I... Financial report, thank you. While you're here.
Uh-oh. Go ahead, Leslie.
I've got Matt here, and everything is rocking along, and we're starting to see the effect of the increased prices for gas, chemicals, for the sewer plant, different things like that.
We're starting to see them in our monthly reports, in our monthly bills that we're getting. So, we're gonna take a look at some of the line items as we go along. We may have to do an amendment at the end of the year because they may be that much over budget. Our sales tax keeps rocking along, doing well. It's a little bit odd because April was up so much, and May is traditionally a big month because that's where you get also your first quarter filies show up in the May deposit. So, I'm a little puzzled about why April was up so much and then May was just barely up. It may, I don't know, people may be reporting late. I don't know. It'll be interesting to see what happens next month.
Okay.
I mean, with that being said, that was still our best March ever. But, you know, it just was a little puzzling why historically it's usually a little bit better percentage-wise than it was this month.
Speaking of price gas, do we buy gas in bulk currently? Do we pay retail?
Yeah, we pay retail. Well, actually, I think we get a rebate check every month. They cut us a little bit of a break.
We're on a state, a state fleet card.
Yeah.
And, and we, we get adjusted pricing and then rebate on our bill each month.
The only thing I have about bulk is the tanks. And when it comes to tanks, the EPA has really, really cracked down on those.
Are there any other organizations that could help with any of the chemicals or... I know that there's a lot of those out there for, you know, private business. I'm not sure about cities. I don't know.
We have BIBOR, but I don't know what chemicals... You know, mostly BIBOR is for your capital, you know, capital items. And then something like cobhners and different stuff like that, that we can look and see. I never thought about checking BIBOR.
When I see what you're saying, we all have a sewage water plant that the three counts needed twenty-four thousand gallons or something, you know. They could maybe negotiate that.
I'm gonna go back to the financial question.
Mm-hmm.
Looks like the anomaly is April, not May.
Yes.
Well, that's what I mean. It seems like April is so much more than one.
And that makes you nervous because?
Well, because just...
It's not normal.
You know, when you see something like that, you don't want to come back and see a huge audit payment being taken out of your, you know, in the next few months, like somebody overpaid or something. But you just notice these things.
What you're here for. Anything else for the financial... financial report? Thank you. Looking good. Keep it going. Now... The Board of City Commission may discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Number one, the election of city officers.
As well as y'all know, at this point, after every election, the board yourself votes and nominates and names members or places for this board. In front of y'all is the current, the way it's set up now. And with that, that's up to y'all.
Well, I think our president mayor has been doing a fantastic job for us, so I would like to nominate Larry.
I'll second that. I'm moving on the nation Cecil.
All right, we got a motion. Motion from Cecil, a second from Richard to nominate Larry Vernon, and also for those nominations to Cecil. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Mayor Pro Tem, open that up.
I think Richard's doing a good job there too, so.
Yeah.
Approved that last week.
Make the motion. How old is Richard B.?
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Cecil and a second from Ben to make Richard the chairman pro tem. Any other nomination? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Secretary Treasurer?
Just Treasurer now.
Just Treasurer now?
Mm-hmm.
Nominate Cecil Thunderburg for Treasurer.
Second.
Nomination from Zach for Cecil Thunderburg to Treasurer and a second from Richard. Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. You wanna pose the same sign? You abstain? Thought you might wanna pose, but you're okay. Cecil and Assistant Treasurer is Ben McNabb and Zach Dar.
We do not have to do a secretary, correct?
No.
We have a secretary.
Secretary.
Yeah, so now, now we just have a chairman, co-chairman, uh, or chairman pro tem, Treasurer and two assistant Treasurers.
Do y'all have to vote for the other two?
Do we do well?
Let's make it official. I'll have to vote on this one probably.
It's the same, yeah.
Let's make it, let's make it official. Let's go.
Nominate Zach and, and our famous pharmacist.
Got a motion from Richard to nominate Zach Dar and Ben McNabb Assistant Treasurers.
Second.
And second from Cecil. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Y'all voted. That's good. All right. Thank y'all very much. And now, which we normally don't do, but we have a reason to do this, is to go into executive session. It shouldn't take very long. We're going to executive session according to the Texas Government Code, uh, five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, deliberation about real property. We'll go into that at six-eleven. Okay, I'll show it back out of executive session at six-thirty. Any business to conduct out of executive session?
I move that we accept the property described on the flat survey of point three-five acres of land out of the part of, uh, of three acre parent tract situated in John House Survey, eighty-one fifty-nine, city of Eastland, Eastern County, Texas, uh, to be adopted as, uh, a portion of Terry Street.
Second.
Got a motion from Cecil and a second from Zach. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number three, discussion consideration of second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash eight-eight-five, use of RVs in the city limits.
Tony, you wanna go ahead and give a quick rundown? This is kind of your baby.
As we went over, uh, last month, this ordinance is basically a way to have, uh, a set of rules for citizens to be able to use RVs in town, which is not currently allowed for.
Or in our code ordinances. Uh, this is also a way for us to be able to keep track of, of RVs being used as residences. The overall idea is to allow, uh, for people that are not citizens to, if they're coming to visit family or stay with somebody, or like we had with the fires, if somebody's staying with some family members and they're using an RV to house them, uh, it gives them a term of up to thirty days for them to stay. All they need to do is just let the city know who, you know, this, this RV on our property is being used for this, and we're starting at this date. We plan for them to be gone at this time. If it's a similar circumstances, they can always come to the board or, uh, you know, visit with the JJ as far as maybe getting an extension on time. For citizens, it's basically being geared for if they are remodeling the property or maybe they're doing a fresh build of a property, uh, where there is no current structure. It gives them a chance to be on the property, number one, to help secure the property, but also give them a place to stay while they're working, uh, building a home here in town. Uh, the idea is since most of our billing permits, uh, ideally have a length of time of six months, uh, we're using that as a, as a length of time. Uh, for that, they would pull a permit for that use. Uh, it's ten dollars for a permit, and, um, that can be renewed once a month for up to six months for the length of the, uh, billing permit. And like with everything else, if there's an issue where they need to go over, that can be discussed with the JJ or they can come to the board. Also, uh, we are talking about for them to park. Right now, parking, uh, requires vehicles to be parked on a hard oil or surface, not be parked on a... If you're building a new, a new home, there's not gonna be a driveway there, so it also gives JJ and I the ability to waive any type of parking regulations for that, so they'll be able to, to use the property, uh, where it's not currently allowed.
And this is the second reading?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And it has been amended as you requested.
Yeah, right. Section, uh, one-oh-five dash one-oh-nine, the term we removed the last sentence. That seemed to, uh, be at odds with the rest of that section.
I believe we pass ordinance twenty-two dash eight-eight-five.
I'll second it.
Got a motion from Zach and a second from who? Ben?
Ray.
All right. Much renewed. Second from Richard. Any other discussion of ordinance, second reading ordinance twenty-two dash eight-eight-five? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four. Update the fee schedule.
Uh, as y'all know, anytime we do anything with the fee schedule, we have to do an ordinance to amend it. Um, the permit for the RV is on page five, section five hundred dash two, temporary RV residence. The initial permit's ten dollars, and thereafter it'll be twenty dollars per renewal. All that does is keep everybody honest and then y'all tasked...
What do we, what do we call for, what's the renewal?
Every time you come back after thirty, go ahead.
Thirty days. If you, if you have your initial permit, you can come back in to renew it to extend that permit. However, if that initial permit has already been done, you're coming back to do it again after it's already went out. It would increase the, uh, the, uh, the price by ten dollars for the next per, for the next extension of the permit.
And then on page twelve, we talked about trailers last month at the, at the convenience center. To make it simple, we changed it to four dollars a foot. And that should be it. To make it, should be quick, easy math to go from then. Then the, the table on page thirteen will, if y'all agree, will go away.
Yeah, and, and this is the second reading?
Yes.
Um, if we accept ordinance twenty-two dash eight-eight-six?
Second.
Got a motion from Zach and a second from, uh, Cecil for approval of ordinance from the second reading of twenty-two eight-eight-six. Any other discussion? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. What'd you do?
Well, I may have misunderstood. Y'all, the second, who seconded it?
Ben.
Ben.
What did I say? Cecil?
You said Cecil.
I think you said Cecil.
I think I did say Cecil.
No, it was Ben.
You didn't speak up faster. Richard made the second on that, I'm sorry.
Ben got that.
Ben?
Ben got that.
Y'all sound exactly alike.
I couldn't...
I don't know if you need to thank me for that or you need to cuss me for that, but...
Okay.
Man, I do have trouble telling y'all apart. Man, this is rough. Miss one meeting and fall apart. All right, are we ready for the city manager report?
You tell me.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, GLO, we're just kinda, we'll be doing every month, turning in paperwork to the state and, uh, we're headed, we're moving forward, just not at the rate I want. Uh, when it comes to the H and H study, on May twenty-fifth, we will host the first of three public hearings uh, here at four o'clock, Roma?
Yes, sir.
I believe so.
No, five to seven.
Five to seven. That's right. We have a pre-meeting at four. Uh, five to seven, we've had, I've actually had a couple people call and ask questions, uh, about that. They're gonna kinda update where they're at and, uh, have, really answer any questions that the public has if they have any questions. Uh, the Highway Six sewer line extension...
Who needs to be at that meeting? Do we need to be there?
No, sir.
That's optional.
That's optional.
Okay.
That Highway Six sewer line, that extension to pick up the west side of Highway Six and those businesses should be complete. Um, they've had a few setbacks out there and have not got it complete yet. But I think they went back to the original plan and we're gonna have it done now. TexDOT and the signal lights and ramps, you know, we've talked about this, golly, for a year and everybody thought it was kind of a done deal. Well, she called me last week and said that, um, everything's been put on hold. Uh, the bids came in, seven hundred thousand over bid. Um, so they pushed it back six months and will try to rebid it then. So everything at twenty and Main Street has been put on hold. Uh, we, we all see the prices just go crazy. Uh, dam repairs, uh, as part of the, you know, the GLO grant and stuff like that, they will be doing some work on Eastern Lake Dam. As part of that, uh, since we cannot find any of the original paperwork on where all the dirt came from, from Eastern Lake Dam, they will have to do a small archaeological dig out there. So, yeah. And Texas State is going to conduct that. I haven't got when they're gonna start or exactly what the scope of that project's going to be, but where we're at with that.
But damn, we're already weakening up without that dig.
That's what I said. Well, I mean, my thoughts to them were like, you know, it was built in nineteen nineteen. They weren't moving a bunch of dirt in at that time. So... Um, airport, met with the Park Hill engineers and TexDOT for the final design on the project. Uh, all parties agreed on the design and moving forward. Now, we're just kinda wait to see where the bids come in at and to see if we will get to move forward with the project because, you know, that, those are two thousand and eighteen costs that this was bid on. So, just like every project we have going, that we're bid out during that timeframe, so we'll see if it comes. The derrapacher is here, and it got to run for a couple days. We ran out of emulsion, which is the binding agent. Now we can't get any more emulsion.
Wow.
So, um, we don't have a big enough tank to store it. So we're trying to figure out a better way, uh, to get it. Brown wood, really doesn't wanna sell just a two hundred gallon load because we were gonna take the trailer down there and just get two hundred gallons. They weren't quite ready for, to do that yet.
What, what, uh, minimum?
Six hundred. So, we're looking for a tank and a way to get everything to work right now. But anyways, that's all I got.
I'll get a meeting for May twenty-fifth. I think they picked that date.
They did. Do we have something that day?
Where did you get that?
That's about.
Okay, who's up next? And then Chief?
I believe that would be me, sir.
Code compliance. All right, Chief, code compliance guy.
Okay. Uh, for April, we started with thirty cases open. Terry opened twenty-six new cases. Closed seventeen cases. It left him with thirty-nine to begin May. Out of those twenty-six cases opened, there were fifty-three violations. Out of seventeen closed, there were thirty-eight violations. Um, had two junk vehicle violations. We had a citation issued for one of those, uh, properties. Had four annual notices, uh, given out, and total fines assessed four hundred and twelve dollars. And, um, that's all I have about the code. Uh, code enforcement is sparse for planning is on, or, uh, for planning. The townhomes have already begun their second, uh, phase. I've done the inspection on the three of the buildings for their, before they pour concrete. One of them's already got the concrete poured. Um, I think, uh, another one has begun as well. Uh, and those guys are, are going through that. Uh, went and inspected the plumbing at the new building at the school. That's coming along quite well. Um, they've got all of the plumbing roughed in except for the kitchen area. And, uh, they're still working on the big, um, welding area. Don't have a roof on that quite yet, but it's getting there. And, um, can't think of anything else off the end.
You do. Any questions, Charlie?
All right. Ready?
All right. April was again a busy month. Two hundred and sixty-eight calls for service. Uh, we did thirty-seven incident reports, thirteen arrests, uh, equated to twenty-two total charges. Uh, filed twenty-one cases with the district attorney's office, wrote a hundred and twenty-four moving violations and five hundred and thirty-three warnings. Basically a five-to-one ratio, or five-to-one ratios, total of six, six hundred and fifty-seven contacts. Uh, animal control was very busy this month. She issued thirty-two citations and four warnings and had a hundred and nineteen calls for service during the month. She was very busy.
And this is a new animal control?
This is our new animal control. And Blake, our new officer that's been in FTO, she's, was in ghost phase for most of the month. She is now out on her own and as of Friday, she's, she's by herself. She's off FTO and we're back to full staff, basically. So, most of the month, we were functioning with five, five officers out of patrol. Anyway, we also did a hundred and thirty-two business checks during the night times and most of those are getting door hangers and stuff left so, so that people know that we're there watching their properties at night. Had two DWI arrests and three droga arrests during the month as well.
Good work. I, I gotta ask, but I'm, I just don't know. You talked about having thirteen arrests and twenty-two charges, but only twenty-one's up on your report cases filed with DA.
Okay.
What's the difference?
It could be one that's still not ready to go to the district attorney. It's still under investigation.
Other than it went somewhere else or something else.
No, okay.
Anything else for, you sent it, Dan? Thank you, Dan. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir.
Fire department.
Good evening. Uh, sorry?
Good evening.
All right. Uh, we slowed down a little in the month of April. Uh, we'd been steady up, uh, for the year and then we've only made seventy, uh, sixty runs.
Uh, for April. Uh, the last time we met, I had not accumulated the calls from dispatch that, that occurred during the Eastland County complex. Uh, we got those, and those were twenty-eight additional incidents that we responded to during that Kid Fire complex. So that made our run number for March at one oh-six. Uh, it got us up there a little bit. But this month in April, we were a little slow, a little, little slower than our trend at sixty calls per service, uh, which put us down to right at two calls per day. Uh, there were forty-five incidents occurred in the city and thirteen occurred outside into the county. For, uh, uh, two incidents, we went, uh, mutual aid to one of our neighbors, uh, somewhere. We did install one smoke detector. Uh, again, we would like to just be sure that that smoke detector program has continued to ring through the community. Uh, we'll see here in just a second. Uh, at, we had eleven incidents that occurred after ten o'clock at night and before seven in the morning. Uh, so the volunteers and the staff are getting up, serving the public in the middle of the night. We attended three structure fires, um, and that puts us at a fifteen total for our, for our data, which is three a month. Uh, and we're real close to that, uh, for the month of, uh, May, already halfway through. So, uh, we had, uh, four grass fires, zero vehicle fires, and twenty-five medical assists. We go and assist the ambulance and, uh, uh, I, we use those, uh, those events are, are some of our most highest opportunities to be introduced into people's homes. And, and our staff, uh, we kinda make a habit of checking for smoke detectors and stuff like that while we, uh, while we have that opportunity to be invited, and we're finding a lot of those working detectors present. So, maybe we're seeing our smoke detector installation numbers going down for a good reason. But, uh, we're, we're happy to see that. Six motor vehicle accidents, eight public assists, and fourteen false alarm type investigations. Um, so that's kind of the statistics for our month of, of April. And so now I wanna take the opportunity to introduce Peyton Cox. Uh, he's our newest firefighter for staff. He joined us on May second, uh, and he's been in an orientation, and he is due to start on A shift, uh, on the, on next Sunday. Uh, he'll be our twenty-four hour staff on A shift beginning, uh, next Sunday. Peyton, we're glad to have him, looking forward to his, uh, uh, contribution and his asset to the community and our department. Uh, one of the great things we got to do is with the fire department, we handed out a free breakfast at the Rib, Rip Rib Fest and, uh, had a good turnout, a good community interaction there. Um, we had, uh, our, our time clock logged five hundred and twenty-four volunteer hours. And that's about seventeen point five a day. That's not counting the battalion being staffed by somebody on a twenty-four, or on a overnight. It's, it's typically during the day, eight to five by myself, but even overnight and on the weekends, uh, we're, we're staffing it either myself or a volunteer. So we're supplementing that. So we're supplementing that, uh, staff with somebody. And, and so the time clock, what we figured out is if anybody is logged in over a certain amount of hours, it automatically logs them out. So we've had several volunteers had do a twenty-four hour overnight stays. And so we're not being able to capture that, that time because if they don't log out and log back in, it kicks them out in the middle of the night. So we've, so I didn't want to make up any hours that, but we have, uh, so it's five hundred and twenty-five hours plus, 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 plus. So, uh, the rehab trailer, uh, we've been, um, the, the, some of the volunteers along with staff have been dialed in on that. We've done some electrical work, got some wiring stuff set up for lights and different things. Um, and then we purchased, uh, the volunteers purchased two, uh, cooler, ice chest coolers. Uh, their body compartment has a freezer on one side and just a refrigerated side. So we'll have one for drinks and different items of that nature and the other one we'll put in cold towels and different stuff like that for rehab. And obviously the weather, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to get that done and on the road. So it's ready to go. We're just trying to finish it up where it's even nicer. So that rehab trailer is definitely, um, in our resource queue, well, with the three-digit days coming and going. So, uh, is there any questions on any of the?
Is there rehab trailer available to the rubber department for animal control?
Yes, yes. Uh, and, and, yeah, that's absolutely, we've made that, uh, we've sent that message out. But even, even if a structure fire or any type of a long-term event that they're going to be going on, we've shared that with the county chiefs, uh, the capabilities of that resource and, and, and absolutely made it available to them to, uh, uh, we, it'll, it will, it'll end up being outfitted with aspirin, uh, eye wash, vay, you know, uh, just stuff to get you through the, those long events. So it, it's going to be a nice rig when it's, when, when we get in. We're close getting it dialed out.
There you go.
Any other question? Uh, so if I, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a little of your time, share with you the, uh, Eastland County complex. Uh, we put, we've put together a small PowerPoint and in hopes to just, uh, share some of the behind the scenes that, that took place on then, on March seventeenth. Uh, still seems to me like it wasn't that long ago, but, uh, we're, we are getting some distance between it. Um, so one of the, uh, things that I would, I was, uh, when I briefed the governor and, and in a lot of discussions, I think even in presenting, presenting some of the, to, to, to the commission and the mayor and the city manager is I think we forecasted this event coming. Now, I, I don't think we saw the magnitude of it, but we were prepared. This letter was sent out by Chief Kidd from the Texas Department of Emergency Management at eight-thirty that morning. Uh, we were sitting at the table. I received this from our fire coordinator from the Texas Forestry Service, uh, Jacob Brockett. Fortunately, uh, the little minor fires that had been leading up to this, uh, we began working with Jacob. Um, and I, I was new, he was new and, and we started, we ended up, uh, he ended up building a great relationship in this county and, and that paid dividends for this county, uh, when this event took place. So we were not on this list and he forwards, began forwarding us and I get them, I get daily fire briefings from him, uh, even now. But this was sent out, the volunteers, we were having coffee and we went over this and it was a huge contributor to some of the success that we had that day. And I'll read you, it was sent out at eight-thirty in the morning and it was, uh, declared extreme critical wildland fire. One of the things it said, I found, it said the fire rate spreads and these fuels will reach three to four miles per hour with flame lengths ten to fifteen feet long. This, this equates to the flame height of a one-story building burning the length of a football field in a minute. And we saw it. And I've got a few little videos that you'll get to see it too. The next thing it declares is all first responders must plan and focus accordingly on evacuation. And that was the discussion that we had around the table. It's kind of, we all had an awe moment there that we really hadn't thought about the importance of evacuation because we, if we're not careful, we have a tendency to tunnel vision solely on firefighting. And so, uh, I wanted to lay that in there because it really does, um, had a huge contribution to some of the success I believe we had that morning. This was, took place at? So nine forty-five in the morning?
Dispatch from station six. What you may note to add, an additional station to any brush or grass fire requirement for station six for the remainder of the day, into the elevated wildland rig.
So that shows we were prepared. That morning, we had a TIFMS deployment in our station. It was twenty firemen from different areas of the metroplex. They had been pre-assigned to Eastland, preparing for this day. We had, uh, the, the helicopters, uh, were stationed at our municipal airport. I mean, we were ready to go. So kind of the fire events that led to some of our challenges that day was we, the day before we had the Walling Fire and that was west of Cisco, just a little southwest of Cisco, almost to the Cal, Callahan County line. And that was the, uh, was an excellent precursor to what we were fixing to be dealing with the next day. Uh, they reported on scene with heavy, uh, fast fire moving and fire moving from tree top to tree top. Uh, and so, so, uh, the next morning on three seventeen is when the Oakmont Fire broke out in Brown County. And that's what took the TIFMS deployment out of our station. So two things that we're, we're the Kid Fire, there's two, two things with it. The Kid Fire was the last fire of the day to start. That worked against us and that worked for us. And, and I'll explain to that why. The Oakmont Fire started, took the TIFMS deployment and started drawing resources south down into Brown County. The Wheatfield Fire started in Cross Plains and burned into our county. So it got Rising Star and Carbon was alerted to that fire and they were responding. Then the, what we're calling the Carbon Fire because they married the two fires together, the Kid Fire and the Carbon Fire, but the original Carbon Fire started at County Road two eighty and two eighty-one. While Carbon was on responding to the Wheatfield Fire and Rising Star, they were diverted to their fire, which is the fire that essentially did all the damage and destruction in Carbon. When Carbon was alerted, they alerted us to go assist Carbon. As we were responding to Carbon, I got almost to I twenty and they alerted us to the Kid Fire. So these rapid progressions of fires were dependent on each other for assistance. We were all being diverted to our own fires, spreading us those so thin that we had a difficult time managing all the tactical assignments needed. Uh, so there's where we, um, got out of the fire front, out of danger and, and, and focused strictly on evacuation because of the conversation we had that morning. It, it drove us there. So the Blowing Basin Fire, the Mango Fire and the Cedar Mountain Fire come into play the following Sunday. So this is kind of how it went. Carbon was dispatched at sixteen oh five to two eighty-one and two ninety. Eastland was dispatched to assist them. Then we were dispatched to one ninety-six and Battalion Six arrived on scene and assumed Kid Command. Ranger was dispatched, uh, almost thirty minutes later to a downtown building. And Cisco was diverted back to the Walling Fire. They had a push out on the Walling Fire. They called for, uh, said it was threatening structures and so they had to, uh, divert. And when I say divert, Ranger and Cisco both had, uh, brush rigs on our Kid Fire and they had to leave. So what we did get, we got it, we, once, once we engaged them, we got even thinner because Ranger recalled their companies back to the city for their three-story fire and Cisco had to divert off of our fire to go back to the Walling Fire. We just ran out of resource. We just didn't have enough people. So this is, um, the Kid Fire. Again, we are headed to, uh, Carbon and we get a call to Kid Fire. This is just north of dispatch. And this is what we're seeing. So we've been assigned to this fire about a minute and a half and this is what's, this is what we're seeing, uh, on our way. So this is kind of our arrival. So it has just cleared over Highway six there and is making the, the, the backside of the houses that face west on Highway six, just south of twenty-five sixty-three. So I, I, I'm just ahead of them. I'm actually, uh, I'm probably, uh, actually, at this time, we're, we're focused on the east side of twenty-five sixty-three. It's already cleared over. We cleared the trailer house on the corner there and then we worked these houses back here. And that's where some of our, our resources, the assignment was to go east and start evacuating. Just abandon the firefight, go start getting people out. Um, if you noticed the radio traffic there, that was me calling dispatch asking for all available law enforcement officers, uh, to come out and participate, help us. So it's already jumped Highway six. I've come where this is on the Carbon side looking back. So we abandoned that position and what we were waiting for is over here on the, uh, yeah, you can't, uh, on the, uh, so this is looking north, back towards Eastland. On the right, our right, uh, is the flank that's coming over Highway six and it's moving into these houses that line Highway six there. And what we're waiting is for this burst to come over and then we're going to attack that flank to divert it off of those. There's about four houses in a row that we got on. But when I start the video, it, I've had several people and, and just in conversation say, how did it jump Highway six? Well, well, the first one that we arrived, um, I was a little distracted that I didn't get any video. I was working at some, on some of the, but this one, since we're waiting, I thought I would go ahead and try to get a video of this. And if you'll see right in the very beginning, it makes it all, it, it extends a hundred percent across the Highway six. The flame lengths make it all the way across. And, and this actually started to burn down before I thought about videoing. If you're going to Carbon, you'll see just south of Flatwood intersection, about a quarter of mile, you'll see where Highway six is burnt, the actual pavement is burnt. That's where that was. And, uh, like I said, it's already starting to back down, but I missed the video where extended, it, it lapped all the way across and set the grass on fire. Once it cooled down, we had a Gordon fire truck and our truck and they went out here and diverted it off of, uh... So here's just some videos of what we were dealing with once it got into the trees. We're figuring these to be about thirty, maybe if we were exaggerating, forty-foot flame heights coming off the top of these trees. Well, one of the things I failed to mention is, uh, on my way, the first video you saw where I said I was just north of dispatch and this is what we're, I was on the phone with the forestry service and he told me, "Chief, I got some bad news for you." I said, "What's going on?" He said, "We're to have no aircraft. They're, due to the winds, they're not launching in any aircraft." And I said something to the fact of, "Oh, we'll see you in Dallas," or something like that. I would just... So here, you, the previous video showed you the, the challenges we had once it got into the tree lines and into the trees and was going tree top to tree top. This is the challenges we were dealing with, uh, in the open coastal fields, uh, kind of like the letter said, where it can run a football build in about a minute. And notice the wind in the microphone. So, oh, well, I was gonna... So what, what I think, uh, the layperson wouldn't realize is that as this fire front is coming across in the direction, the heat convection out a hundred yards is enough to start baking the potato. And it, it's not the, the, the fire front that, that we have to worry about. There's convicted heat that, that's dissipating way out in front of that fire line. So this is what we were left with. This is at eight, oh, no, I'm sorry. This is what, eight-thirty on the day of the fire. So this, we had no aircraft to fly. So they were unable to do any IR flights. This is strictly satellite imaging that, that came in. Um, so, and we're at eight-thirty. I'm not sure, I don't remember if we are at our wind change yet or not, but we're, we're right on the brink and it makes me think that we have gotten our wind change because of the little hook that's on the, our head fire, which our, our lead fire, the Kid Fire's up top, the Carbon Fire's down low and the Wheatfield Fire over in Rising Star is in the bottom, uh, left-hand corner. Um, I mea-, I mentioned about, uh, this thing working in our favor. We were the last fire of the day, so we had the least amount of fire, fire, firefighting equipment as a resource because everyone was doing, attending their own fires that started before ours. The thing that worked in our advantage is when I was on the phone with the forestry service, I got back on the phone and was, and probably had Jake on the speaker in the battalion truck, ninety percent of the time we were dealing with this. Um, I told him, "Do not come here. I need you to go to twenty-two fourteen and y'all have to make a stand at the lake because that's where this is going." So we had task, the ta-, I always want to call them task force because it's T, the Texas Forestry Service, they sent resources up to twenty-two fourteen and was waiting for a breakout to try to make a stop at the lake or a diversion. And Jake calls me, says, "Hey, I've got assets on twenty-two fourteen. They're not seeing anything. There, there's nothing here. No smoke, no nothing." And that's when we all looked up and we had a due north wind that changed the complete complex and changed the pathway of the fire. I'm on the phone with Jake. I said, "Hey, we've got a wind shift." I, I said, "Man, it's almost, it was almost a hundred and eighty-degree change." But the unfortunate part of it, it wasn't. It was really more of a ninety-degree change and that's what, that's what caused us a little bit more challenging. So Jake, I'm on the phone with him and he says, "Uh, it's not coming here. We got to do change." Where's it going? Uh, it took me a minute to spin my old map around a couple of times and I said Gorman. And that's when everybody, the Texas Forestry Service came down twenty-two fourteen to Gorman. We all came and then all the resources were able to meet in Gorman and make that stand. And I think that was about one-thirty in the morning that it, that it, that it came into Gorman and it was a firefight. Uh, they, they dug in. There were, there were some guys that dug in. Uh, they lost, I think, one little outshed building as it came in and they stopped it and you can see where they stopped it. Again, this is satellite imagery because we are not getting any IR flights yet. Uh, but that's where had our fire started an hour, an hour- Uh, but that's where had our fire started an hour, an hour earlier in the afternoon, you can see where Staff Road was, uh, Lake Leon would have, would have, would have been what diverted that fire. And it would have not come without a law, a price of, um, some structures being lost. So the fact we started last and later in the day, uh, it, it, it protected our, uh, that, that, that area of our community, uh, was, was saved. So then at this point, the two fires have burned together. The forestry service come in the next morning, this week over. So this is what we were left with the next morning on March eighteenth. We have about, uh, forty-five thousand acres total. I think the Kid Fire was at, um, thirty-seven thousand of that. Um, and, and you'll see here in the end, the comparisons. They entered, they, they included the Oakmont Fire down there into the Eastland County complex. But that was the first one that started in Brown County that, that took our Tifmus launch and everything went down there. But that's what we're dealing with. So this was on Friday morning. Um, the, the fire station was the EOC. And lots of plates were spinning, lots of things were moving, uh, to keep this thing under control. So we got up from my nap that, and went instantly to work with the forestry service. And everyone's getting gathered around. And we had a couple of challenges. And one of them was, there was a sincere concern that we were going to lose that little cup inside that. If we, if we would have had a push and lost that cup, we would have lost a lot more property and, 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 uh, residences, lot more inclusive in damage assessment. So with this cup here, that was a big deal. We, we were worried that that thing was going to collapse, uh, and, 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 and get fire going. And I'm sitting there talking to Jake and I, and they've got these maps. And you can see the, the biggest highlighted highway there between the two fires is one-eighty-three out of Cisco. Highway six runs right down about just left of where it says Kid there. If you look at the top, you can barely see a yellow line. That's I-20. Now I'm standing there talking to forestry service and we've got fire trucks and firemen and people. And we are working our tell-ins down, off down here. And it hit me, we don't have any fire trucks north of I-20. And we have a lot of county. I told Jake, I said, that ain't even half of our county. So there became, we started plotting and planning to getting people back up and, and, and the tip, the, the football field was full of fire trucks. They didn't all get to go down south. Some of them had to stay up here and rightfully so, we'll see in a minute why. So we're, we're, we have other areas of the county, even though it is not on fire. We, we have to have assets. Uh, uh, we're not out of these conditions yet. So we're plotting around and it's a lot of, a lot of good work took place on that. Getting it organized. So this is on March twentieth. We had, we saw this one coming. The governor came in on the eighteenth. We went through all that. Uh, that was Friday. Saturday was, um, what, uh, what Saturday, we were getting a lot of pushes out of these fires. We were getting a lot of breakouts. Um, so we had, in the beginning of the Kid Fire, we had excellent command and control accountability. As the fires traveled, progressed, elongated, I think I mentioned to you guys in the last one, we lost radio communications. Then accountability and command and control was fragmented, uh, sincerely. It, it scared me to death. So I went down to the Kokomo Church, uh, on my way to Gorman. And there was four or five fire trucks sitting in the parking lot from Parker County. And I said, who are you guys working with? What are y'all working for? They said, oh, Chief One Hundred's around here somewhere. I said, who is that? So we had these assets showing up, these wanting to help. No one knew they were there. No one knew what was going on. So Saturday morning, we meet at Carbon. And we put out a message that anybody who is volunteering, we, we did not send anybody home. But anybody that's volunteering, you have to have a minimum of two people on truck and gear and meet here. And, and, and what happened is we got down to Carbon and we captured all these resources. And for example, uh, there was a tanker thirty that came up to our station and filled up off the hydrant. And I walked out there and I was like, hey, guys, how's it going? Oh, good. I said, who are y'all? They were from Crescent. I said, hey, thanks so much for coming. Good to see you. But who are y'all working for? They had, they said, we're just here. They said, we're just going around and filling up brush trucks. Well, that's beautiful, but we can't have that because we may have a brush truck down the road that needs water. We got this tanker here and nobody knows they're here. So they got to get into the system. So we did that Saturday morning and it worked. We allocated a resource to the individual chiefs down there in Gorman, Carbon, Rising Star. When they were done with them, they would release them. They, we, we started this pattern. Well, Sunday, we went back into red flag conditions. And that's when we had the three new major starts was the Blowing Basin Fire, the Mangum Fire, and then the Cedar Mountain Fire. And, and that's the one off of Highway six up there, the Cedar Mountain. The reason that those fires did not become a, 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 a more significant burn was the fact that we had organized our resources and we were able to dispatch people, uh, uh, companies there immediately. So the Mangum Fire also had some forestry service guys working off of the hill of the Kid Fire. So they were there eleven acres. And it was moving. And it was threatening a house. And I think, uh, even the church down there that it was, it was on its way to doing some damage. Eleven acres. And the, and the Cedar Mountain Fire started with a flat tire on I-20. They pulled over the side of the road. Ladder four from Cisco was responding to a motor vehicle accident on I-20. Saw it, diverted, pulled off two hundred feet of hose and could not get it. It went. And when it, when we, our engine six arrived and took command, uh, Charlie made the announcement to me, don't send anybody here, have everybody go to Highway six. Cause we're not doing any good. We're going to stop it on Highway six. And we were able to, to manage and communicate with, I think we ended up with ten, twelve brush trucks, tankers, and, and we stopped it right there at Highway six. So here's how that happened. The Eastland Fire Department became the, uh, Command Center. All this on the board there, those are every fire that's going on in the county with our resources attached to it. We set up here, uh, that's the battalion car running command with Google Earth. That board you see here, my pointer don't work on this. This has magnetic, um, every, every resource in the county, brush engine, every truck that Cisco has, Ranger, every, all eight stations, every piece of equipment is magnetic. And we can run the command board and track and keep accountability, who is where and who is doing what. There's about six or five, uh, working fires working on that board. And, uh, what ended up happening is Dispatch became overwhelmed. And what they were doing, they were getting a call for a grass fire. And they were saying, any unit in area of County Road one, two, three, and four, five, six, we got a grass fire. Well, nobody really knew where that was. No one knew who was the closest. So what they did is every emergency call they got came here. And we dispatched the resources. Thank you. Yeah. So, so every nine-one-one call that came in for a fire came here. Dispatch just called us, gave me the location and nature of call. And then we sent it out to the available resources. We assigned everybody to our own trucks. So that when we got a call, we were able to launch out without people running around saying, what truck do we take? We had everyone assigned out, responding to calls. And we were managing calls all over from Rising Star to Cisco. Everybody's call came in here and we knew who was available. And we knew who was not available, who was already working on fires. As this fire got put out, that chief would tell me, we would put them back on the board. And then they would go to a staging area and sit and wait. And then we would, when we would assign another call, we'd have though, we would know who was here, ready to go. And that's how we were able to pounce on those new starts, uh, that came out. It's because we knew who was where and who was, and that is the command center that is being built in that battalion car right now. Uh, you can see right here, the whole, the, we're, we'll be sending it off for our radios. And these are headsets so that the incident commander can run this without, it's interesting how a headset, people think they can't talk to you. So what was happening in the beginning as we were managing all this and, and, and this was like, uh, you know, juggling flares. But people want to come up and ask you questions and talk and it's just right. So this, but this is the vehicle that's being built out. This right here is the library, has all the data hazmat information. Uh, and that's what we're using that for. And it, it got, it got put to work that day. Huge asset for this event. Here's just some of the tactical boards. I hope this is French to y'all. But, uh, this is what was going on. Um, uh, one of our newest members here, Sharon Harper, she's our treasurer. And she worked that day as the fit, which we call a field techni, uh, field incident technician. And essentially what they do is what she does is listens. And as things transpire, she writes them down. And that's another way that we keep track. Um, she rode out with the battalion on the Kid Fire. So the Kid Fire broke out. Here's where it started on I-20. All the assets met here. And we lost one structure, uh, uh, on this fire. And the reason that we lost that structure is because that fire came right into the back door. Had it, had it missed it anyway, uh, we, we would have been able. But after the fire behavior that we saw out on there, we, we, we just could not put anybody uh, between the house and the firefight. That's the Cedar Mountain Fire. Did I say Kid? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is the Cedar Mountain Fire, I-20 and Highway six. But one structure was lost on that, uh, because that fire came right in the back door. Uh, but this is where we made the stand. We loaded the brush trucks up right here, pointing out, uh, if you were on this side of the county road, you faced Eastland. If you were on that side, you face Cisco. If it got too bad, we were just going to abandon. Uh, but we did make the stand. We had Breckenridge and Ranger sitting down here, just in case we had some small starts for some, for some, uh, uh, sparks and jump over. And that's what the tactical board looked like just on that Highway six of who's doing what, where. Uh, and firefighter Harper did that for us, riding in the battalion and managing all this stuff. Knowing who's where and what they're doing. Anybody calls a mayday or needs help, we know exactly where they're at. We know exactly where to send somebody to go help them. So we keep them located geographically and by radio. So it went well and it paid off on, uh, on the highway there. So there's what we were left with on the Kid Fire, uh, on the twentieth. And, uh, they're just working the, the, now, now that this is what it looks like, the difference in what we saw earlier in the IR flights. They're getting actual, uh, infrared. They're flying over it with infrared and charting exactly the fire line. And that's the whole complex. Oakmont, uh, the Blowing Basin, Wheatfield, the Walling started the day before this. There's the Kid had married in with the Car, Carbon Fire and the Cedar Mountain. And that's pretty much how it ended. Pretty much from that, we had a couple of little breakout, a couple of little pushes, different here, but that's how it ended. And it totaled with the Walling Fire at three hundred and eighty-three acres. Uh, Oakmont was four thousand, Wheatfield seven thousand, the Kid was forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. Mangum was eleven, the Cedar Mountain was two-twenty-nine, and the Blowing Basin was two-twenty-eight. And again, the Mangum and the Cedar Mountain Fire occurred on that Sunday where we were in that critical red flag weather behavior again. And I, we, we contribute the organization that we had gotten together and, and the accountability and the resource management that, that made a difference on those two events. So it was Dispatch, the Kid Fire was Dispatch on three, eighteen seventeen, about four seventeen in the afternoon. And it was contained on March thirty-first. The total complex from the Kid Fire was forty-two thousand, three thirty-three. The total complex was fifty-four thousand, five thirteen. We had two injuries with a hundred and fifty-eight residences damaged or destroyed. We had one fatality. And, uh, total cost of the Kid Fire was four million, six fifty-two, eight oh eight. These are estimates of course. And the Wheatfield was four hundred thousand with a total of five million, a little over five million damages done. Any questions, anything that, uh, I might have missed or sparked your injuries?
Found some different fire departments you didn't know were out there. Was the radio problem, are radios actually quit? Or they were on different radios and couldn't communicate with the rest of them? What was the radio?
Uh, the radio range. Uh, we lost range. It, it, you know, so, uh, we're not, it's a, it's, it's a unique event where it takes place over fifteen miles. Uh, you know, if it's a structure typically it takes place in a city block. And, but this, we actually outran our radio range. And that's where we were getting the mobile repeater into that, but command vehicle that will extend, extend those radio ranges, uh, way beyond the, the capability of a portable handheld. And it'll push us to. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Another thing, you, you didn't, I heard this story six weeks ago before our last meeting. And, and I appreciate you putting this off so I could be here to hear it. But you didn't lay out the Cedar Mountain Fire, the way you laid it out to me six weeks ago. And I want to go back over that story because I can only hear the commissioner here that they hadn't heard it. But you lined up twelve trucks, as you said strategically, so they could escape if they had to.
Yes, sir.
But you went on the radio and said what before it started? You remember?
Yeah, I mean, so. It's a chain, right? And, and so we're strong as our, and together we're, and we said, uh, if anybody feels uncomfortable and wants to leave, then we all leave. And, and that was, we, 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 we had tanker stage west side. We had tanker stage east side. We had brush trucks lined up, essentially backing into the hazard zone. And it was game on. We, behind the, uh, behind the structure that was lost was a significantly large pile of tires. And once the tires caught on fire, we were under near zero visibility on Highway six. So.
But all of you stayed.
From the incident commander's standpoint, that's a very uncomfortable situation where people are in vehicles with zero visibility. And we're stacked in and, but everybody stayed. And, um, I was on the phone with the forestry service, bless his heart. And, um, so the wave front hit Highway six. Uh, we made that stand. Uh, we put one brush truck up on the hill. It, it was right there. There was a residence up there and we had them a couple of line down. And once it cleared, uh, the firefight hit. Um, and I got somebody announced on the radio, it's jumped Highway six. And I told Jake on the forestry service, I said, well, we lost it. I said, I'll see you in Breckenridge. And I hung up with them. Well, they were able to attack. I mean, there for a minute, for a day, a few days, if you drove down Highway six over on the north side out in that field, you could see those little campfire spots. But we had rigs that were able to hit them before they made big starts. And we, we tackled it out, I don't know how many. And, um, I got to call Daryl from Ranger and Breckenridge and tell them, I think we got it. Y'all go home.
Significant in what you guys did and all the fire departments that were able to help, uh, risking their lives. And the thing that's scary, if that would have jumped and y'all would have lost it, I can't imagine the damage and destruction all the way to Breckenridge.
Yeah, I, I'm joking with that. Our next stand would have been one-eighty-three. Yeah, I'm joking with that, our next stand would have been 183 and 112, that would have been our next attempt. Well, there is a huge target hazard there is, if you're familiar with that area. So there's a huge target hazard there. So it, it, you know, we, our goal was to stop it at Highway six.
You did.
Yeah.
And that's why I can relive that story where you told me right after it all happened.
Yeah.
It was really significant.
What you guys did and what everybody, the 12 that were involved that took that stand is pretty impressive.
They did, they did, the volunteer, I'm telling you, they hung in there and it was a, it was a beautiful feeling and I, I've. Once it was over, it was, it was a good feeling and, you know, fire, in the fire department, we're not, we're not good at taking losses. And, and I came back from Gorman in the middle of the night and had only heard about Carbon and some of the other, and it's just, it's, it's tough to see that and to feel like you didn't have the capability to make the difference in people's lives. It's not what we're, it, it's just hard to accept that. And so, you know, as we do, we sit around and debrief each other and, and what we were able to do is kind of talk about a lot of the positive things that took place. If you were able to go down Highway six recently after that happened, all those yards were burnt and those were fire trucks that stayed behind and took care of those, because we were, where we were able to make a difference was on the back flanks. That you, you, you got to see the head, what we call the head, the fire line, the fire front. It, it was just, it was just eating things in its path. One of the things I use an example is if you were to cut a telephone pole, a section out of a telephone pole this long and put it on a campfire, how long would it take to disintegrate that entire pole? Well, the telephone poles were burnt in two by the fire front, by the, by the fire front, burnt the poles in two at the ground. It would just came through there like a blowtorch and just incinerate things. So there's radio traffic, I didn't put it in here, but there was an announcement made to all, do not make, we're, we're here for evacuation and taking care of, we got to do a good risk benefit analysis on what we're doing. And the, and we made the difference on these back flanks that were going down. I, I, just one, I recall, I was going down a dirt road and there were cattle all along the fence with a flank coming and, and I was, again, this was before the command and control got fragmented, I was able to call a Carbon truck and, and they came right in there and knocked all that down and we just went on to the, we just moved on. I know those cows, I know they did, but we knocked that down, just moved on. So, you know, there was a lot of good things done, a lot of good work done. Lot of good work. And those guys did it.
All your staff and all the people that came and helped.
So thank y'all for listening to that and.
Well, we didn't, we weren't going to those numbers, we didn't go to their house, y'all fell stops at their house.
They, that, that was an impressive stop. I, I thought. I was down there and we were at Gorman's fire station and what an eerie feeling. The, the law enforcement was riding around evacuating, the storm siren was blaring, just the, the smoke was blowing through town and little pieces of trash were blowing through town and we're all standing around there waiting, we're waiting for it to migrate down into where, where we were going to make the stand. And I, I can only imagine what it would be like to be somewhat in a military platoon where you're, I mean, you just, it was an eerie feeling. And they did it, I mean, they dug in. And, but again, I always like, I do agree, I, I, the, the fire department, the members, the volunteers, and, and that's what, you know, when you look across some of these fields and there's fire trucks everywhere and you look at who, who, the amount of people not being compensated and it's a, it, if it don't give you a warm fuzzy feeling, you got something wrong with you. And, but I'll tell you, we appreciate the appreciation, but I have to say, the fire department appreciates this community because the outreach and the thankfulness and the appreciation that we got in donations and just handshakes, pats on the back, whatever, all of that did not go unnoticed from us, from the community. So what a team, what a group effort, I mean, that, so that was a big deal. Very thankful to the community of the appreciation they showed us.
Thank you. So a friend that works with my wife called and said, we're down here east of Gorman and, and the fire's right at our property line. Said, I don't know what to do, I can't get a hold of anybody. Dispatches, I, I've told them I need somebody out here. So I said, okay, picked up the phone, I called this guy right back here and I said, Joe, here's the 911 address. They got fire approaching their structure, their home. Four minutes later, the planes started coming in and dive bombing.
Amazing.
I always wanted to call in a bombing raid, I got to do it. It worked, it worked. So, and she said she had brush trucks on the property the rest of the day putting out fires.
So the teamwork, the camaraderie, the communication, everybody pulling together makes a success. And I know it's frustrating for the losses that you did incur, but what could it have been? What could it have been? So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn from Zach.
A second from Richard.